Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 1st, 2010, City Council meeting in the city of Waukegan. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Figueroa.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Thank you all present on the counter floor. Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have no comments this evening. We'll go right to audience time. First up would be Mr. Art Lake. Business address, 300 Lakehurst in Waukegan. Home address, 25408 Daring. Mr. Lake, would you come to the podium, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wish to thank each and every one of you for allowing us this opportunity tonight. Specifically, the reason that I'm here is under Judiciary Committee, items B and C. We're asking for permission to do a text amendment as well as a conditional use permit, allowing off-track betting at our facility located in the Fountain Square area. And Mr. Jim Stumpf of Arlington Race Track is here, as well as myself, in case there should be any questions that you would have, we'd be delighted to answer them. And we've met before the Judiciary Committee, the Developmental Review Committee, and many of the staff members. And we've been very, very fortunate to get unanimous approval on this request. We've been working on this for the past two years on behalf of our business, The Sundance Saloon in Monica Banquet, as well as the city of Waukegan, because we don't want to lose this opportunity for the revenue that you guys secure there, nor do we want to lose at Sundance Saloon the opportunity for additional patronage and income flows. So, once again, I thank you for allowing me here, and if there should be any questions, we'd be delighted to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Lake.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Ms. Violet Ricker, 219 Stewart Avenue.
Good evening. My name is Violet Ricker, and I'm the Associate Director at Waukegan Main Street. I'd like to present tonight to City Council the outcomes report for Waukegan Main Street to let you know what we've been doing over the past couple months. This is a report that we'll be presenting monthly to you to keep you apprised of your investment in Waukegan Main Street, which we greatly appreciate. I'd just like to highlight a few items, and then I'd be happy to take any of your questions, or you can address them to me at a later time. We've divided the report into five sections, the first being what Waukegan Main Street has done for downtown businesses. In December, we had a really successful Holiday Fest that brought a lot of people downtown and into the shops, businesses, and restaurants. And we also held six volunteer meet-and-greets in January to reconnect with our volunteers, and those were held in the restaurants, and so that created some new business, too. We have two new businesses opening up in February, one of which opened today. That's called Natural Balance Massage Therapy. They're located at 33 North County in Suite 403A. So, we met with Tara Tosh a number of times to help her out with that. And then the Brick Cafe and Bookstore is opening on February 13th, and that's with Jim Clem. He's a real great guy, so we hope you guys will all come down to that. On the reverse side, Waukegan Main Street has helped potential investors and developers. We work to beautify the city. We partnered with Youth Conservation Corps on Martin Luther King Day to clean up the streetscape. And we've also gotten more volunteers to promote the Art Windows Program. We'll be collecting student art from public and private schools in Waukegan about why I like living in Waukegan, placing them in some of the vacant storefronts, and then holding an awards ceremony in March to bring parents and students downtown. We've also done things for Waukegan residents, and one thing I'd like to highlight there is that we have a lot of new volunteers from Waukegan High School and St. Martin de Porres High School involved with Waukegan Main Street now. Finally, we've done some things to bring new visitors to Waukegan, including promoting downtown businesses on WKRS 1220 AM, holding Holiday Fest, placing menus in the juror room in the county building so that they know what options they have when they come downtown, and networking with other Illinois Main Street communities. So, thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Do the Aldermen have any questions for Ms. Ricker? No. Well, thank you much for your presentation.
Thanks very much.
I will say that we, Robin Shaves and myself, met with Violet several days ago, and we had a wonderful meeting with a lot of ideas and concepts traded back and forth, and we're hoping to be able to put a lot of those into action over the next few months. So, thank you very much. Next up is Mr. Chris Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan.
For the Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan. The last time that I was here, before the council, I had brought up the issue regarding Ms. Sean Gibson, Mayor, and you advised me to follow up on it, and however I did. And we come to find out that, at that particular point, as I had stated here, that she had not received her resolution from the county. And, you know, after following up, because, yeah, she hadn't received it, so what we did find out that, as for the county, they did do their part to make sure she had it, they had it printed up the next day. And the fact of it was, what we come to find out, is that Ms. Gibson didn't receive this resolution until on the 26th, which I believe was last Wednesday, or Thursday, Wednesday. And what I, and the reason that I wanted to bring that up here, because on the council floor, as I told you before, we usually try not to come here unless we do have our facts together and the fact that it's something that needs to be brought before the council. And because it was made to look like on the floor, our first ward Alderman had assured us while I was here, and we told you when we said that she hadn't received it, our first ward Alderman, Mr. Cunningham, basically told, he said, "No, she had received it," which was really a lie, you know, whether it was intentional or unintentional. And it's not an attack, it's just a fact, okay? And I say that to say this, it's not so much that's what I'm here for. The primary thing and the concern that I have is the conduct of this Alderman when we sat back down. And the conduct of this particular Alderman was very unprofessional and inappropriate as we sat down over here to take our seats, and for demonstration and demonstration purposes only, he kept going back and forth from the city council bench and saying, "This is bull." This is bull.
Let's tone that down a bit.
Okay, okay. But anyway, and I'm just, like I said, for demonstration purposes only, because that was the attitude he had. Now, I know back in April, you guys of 2008, you composed a ordinance of civility and decor as to how the audience was to conduct themselves, and that they couldn't basically attack or be belligerent towards an Alderman. Likewise, we don't feel that this Alderman should be misrepresenting. First, first of all, first and foremost, I think an apology, first and foremost, is warranted, first and foremost, to this, I mean, to the citizens and the constituents of the first ward, because basically it was a misrepresentation of our ward. And number two, I definitely say he was owed an apology to his fellow Aldermen, and as well as the young lady and the minister that was sitting on the front bench there last week. Minister, I mean, our revenue votes were sitting there, the other young lady was sitting there, and the way that Alderman carried on, I think it was definitely inappropriate, and it shouldn't have never happened that way.
Okay.
So, I just want to say that, because the ordinance, I mean, the audience have a respect that they have to conduct towards the council members, and vice versa, it should go both ways.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blanks. Appreciate your comments, and in future, I think, you know, the point could have been made a little bit without the additional dressing to it. So, you know, next time you get up, let's leave off the, okay? And you can make your point just as equally well without that, so, thank you. That's it for public comment. We move to the minutes. I have a motion by Alderman Conkin, seconded by Alderman Newsome, to accept the minutes of January 19th, 2010, regular meeting and executive session minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Thank you. Under resolutions and proclamations, we have item A, a presentation by the Waukegan Park District. Okay, no motion is necessary to bring that presentation to the floor. Representatives from the Park District that are approaching the podium. If you could please identify yourselves, we would appreciate it for the record.
I'm Teddy Anderson, the manager of Community Relations for the Park District, and I'm standing in for Greg Petrie, who is with Alicia Mantel, who's son died over the weekend. So, he's with her, and he couldn't be here. And this is Julie Schneider, and Julie is the manager of Special Recreation for the Park District. And we're here to present the city with a plaque from the Illinois Parks and Recreation Association for the Outstanding Program Award in Division Two for the special event, Polar Bear Plunge 2009, Duncan for a decade. This is the first award in the state, I mean, number-one award in the state, so we're very excited. And the city has partnered for years with the Special Rec and the Park District to pull off this event, and again, heroic efforts this last year. This is for the 2009 event. But routinely, we have about 500 people jumping into the lake on New Year's Day to raise funds for special recreation athletes and special recreation programs. And Julie, is there anything else that we?
It's just been a fantastic cooperative effort to, like she said, raise funds for special recreation. Last summer alone, there was probably over $10,000 given out in scholarship money between us and the help of the American Camping Association, but there were 24 kids that went to them going to camp with special needs without the support of scholarships, and this fundraiser, which is the cooperative city, has done an outstanding job of helping build that scholarship fund. So, we're very pleased to get that cooperative effort and all the energy that's put into it by the city, as well as David Motley.
Thank you, yes. And Alderman Newsome will accept that on behalf of the city of Waukegan.
And we actually have two presentations.
Wonderful. Please.
And we hope it will be hung in the halls of City Hall, and we're very excited to be able to present this. And there's another person. There's another person who, if he wasn't involved, this program wouldn't happen, I believe, and that's David Motley. So, David, would you come up here, please? David is the chief cheerleader, one of the chief promoters, and then he serves as the emcee, and then he always jumps in at least once, many, sometimes many times. So, David, for everything that you've done for Polar Bear Plunge, we can't say we appreciate you enough. It's, you're a wonderful partner, and I know you're doing it on behalf of the city, but you go to extraordinary lengths.
I knew they were up to something when both of them were here.
Thank you.
Do we have any comments by the Aldermen for David? You'd like to make?
Congratulations.
Keep up the good work.
You're excused.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just, as someone who has its, has my own ties to the Park District, this is just another example of the efforts they go to on behalf of the community, and a job well done year after year, providing the citizens with what they need to recreate nicely in this town of ours. It's truly a treasure. But I also want to commend David. David is the epitome of a modest man, and there is no one who works harder on behalf of this city to burnish our image, do the grunt work, and all the little things that make us all look better. And David, I mean that from the bottom of my heart, great job, buddy.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to say he's a great son. And I have to tell you, I was down at the state conference this year, David, and the Waukegan Park District was singing your praises, as were most of the executives of the state, the state parks. They are very impressed with what you did and how you accomplished it, and the money that you and the Park District raised over the past 10 years was very impressive, and they'd like to have you. So, so, great job, David.
Well, they can't have him, he's mine for now. But I do want to say, David, since I, you know, coming, I've known you for many years, but I didn't get a chance to really work with you closely, as I have since I've been mayor. And you're unfailingly upbeat, you're also insightful, you're honest. Those are qualities that go a long ways to making a great employee and a great representative for the city of Waukegan. So, I want to thank you as Mayor for all that you've done, and that we have a lot more for you to do in the future. You think you've been busy up to now, you know what's coming. But again, congratulations on this award, it's most certainly well-deserved. Thank you. Next, we have something that's a little bit of fun. We have before each of the Aldermen three selections for the next parking sticker for the city of Waukegan. Following past traditions, they are photographs that were taken by a local photographer. David Motley helped work out the design for these, and I think that they are absolutely, from my standpoint, I like all three of them. Maybe we should offer all three of them and let people select which ones they'd like to have, but I don't think our police would actually probably like that. That would make their jobs just slightly more difficult than it already is. So, at this point, what I would like to do is, if I could, I'm just going to start from my left, and I'm going to start with Alderman Rivera there on the very end.
Larson, I think is first.
No, Alderman Rivera.
He just wants to start.
To my far left.
I pick number one.
Okay, let me, let me write these down, so.
I got them here.
You got them? All right.
Wait a minute.
Rivera picks number one. Alderman Larson.
One also.
Alderman Larson picks number one. Alderman Needham. Number one from Alderman Needham. Alderman Tempest.
Number one.
Number one from Alderman Tempest. Alderman Newsome.
Maybe I should be different, huh? Number one.
Number one from Alderman Newsome. Now, I'm going to go to my far right, starting with Alderman Sam Cunningham. Alderman Cunningham.
I like two.
Number two. There you go. Alderman Conkin. Alderman Conkin.
I'm with Alderman Cunningham, I like two.
Number two. Alderman Moiseo.
Number two.
Number two. Alderman Figueroa.
Number one.
Number one, Alderman Figueroa. Thank you very much. I do believe, therefore, number one is the selection. So, coming soon to the clerk's window near you will be the new city sticker, as chosen by our city council. I think they've chosen wisely. You noticed I stayed out of it, so, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate this, we will move on.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Before we move on, on resolutions and proclamations, there was a lady in Waukegan that turned 100, was in the paper today, Mrs. Troha, and friends of the family had called about a resolution, and the timing didn't work out as far as the party and the council meeting, and I also forgot to call Wayne about maybe getting it on this week's agenda, so we can get it for the next council meeting and get that out.
We'll make sure and have that on there.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Is that related to, is it Mary?
Yeah.
Mary, oh, okay.
Her mother.
Mary Fran, okay. Wonderful. Well, anytime a human body outlasts the majority of the man-built structures and devices over the last 100 years, that's something to celebrate. So, that is, that is great. We're glad to hear that. We congratulate her belatedly. We will provide the appropriate resolution and invite the family to come to receive it. So, thank you very much, Greg, for bringing that up. Now, under committee reports and motions, as you know, in the past, we have been using a new system known as an omnibus system to try to group things into a vote to be able to save some time during the course of the meeting. We will be going into executive session, and it's going to be a lengthy executive session, so we are going to try to collapse the timeframe on the regular open meeting. So, if I might ask our Aldermen to review the agenda and note any item needing, what they feel needs individual attention, ask for the motion, well, first, let's do that. If you would review it, if anybody sees something they'd like to definitely hold out for a vote, let me know. We will mark it accordingly and hold it out. Larry?
Couldn't do no. Couldn't get me a motion.
I'm sorry.
Couldn't get me a motion.
Motion.
Yeah, I'm great, but I don't like to.
Just one moment, please. Corporation Council would like to speak.
Alderman Tempest had indicated to me that he would like to have number B under 11 dealt with separately. Is that correct, Alderman? Does the landmark?
That is correct, but I'd like to voice my opinion to the honest vote. I really am not comfortable with it. I don't think the TV audience really knows exactly what you're doing. I don't know if we're saving that much time. I kind of like the old way of doing it, where we take each motion and we vote on it. I don't mind spending 11, 12 o'clock at night if I have to. I'm retired, I got a lot of time, but I think it's just, I know a lot of this was done in committee, but a lot of times when you take one motion individually at a time, you see how each person votes on it. If there's any questions in regard to that, it's more thorough and more meaningful if you're voting on it just as you talk about it. That's, that's my opinion, but of course, I change, it's hard for an old fellow sometimes, you know?
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, we, it does take a little time to get used to a different system.
I did review it, that's why I spoke to Mayor. Also, item A on the Judiciary Committee, I thought we asked him to give us more information in regard to that cellular task, and I don't believe he did. And I correct Mr. Chairman?
What happened was, we did approve the one that, it's on here, the one we asked him for more information is the one downtown, that, that's the one that was held in committee.
Do you feel that's a sufficient explanation?
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
And one of the things that didn't show up here was the, was the ordinance. I don't see it anywhere on the, the ordinance for empty properties, the vacant properties, vacant buildings ordinance, didn't get on the agenda for tonight.
C, number 11.
Oh, it's not under Judiciary. We passed it out of Judiciary, wound up down there. Okay, it's on there.
Okay. So, okay, and what we will do is, under the omnibus, we will be taking all the items before us from the various committees except for item B under the ordinances and resolutions, which was the, a landmark ordinance. So, at this time, that I will take a motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Conkin, to Alderman Larson.
Mayor, I missed one correction. I thought it was going by committee by committee, I'm sorry. Under Public Safety Committee, item A, that should be corrected to review or to read that the, we're authorized to seek requests for proposals for any necessary improvements to the property at 1721 North Macquarie Road. Alderman Figueroa, as an engineer, corrected the need for a bid when you're just looking for a proposal on.
So, the language that you would like to have struck would be?
A minimum of three quotes, and just say, "To seek a request for a proposal."
RFP, okay. Well, then what we need to do is we need a motion to amend. Yeah, we'll take a motion by Alderman Larson.
Let me second that.
Seconded by Alderman Figueroa to amend item A under the Public Safety Committee to read as follows. Motion by Alderman Conkin, seconded by Alderman Rivera to authorize to seek an RFP for necessary improvements to the property at 1721 North Macquarie Road. Roll call.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item, item B.
Next item on the agenda has to do with zoning calendar 2285 for the petitioner SAC Wireless Clear Wire, and this location is located at 2625 West Glen Flora Avenue. The Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to approve the conditional, to add draft and ordinance approving the conditional use permit for cellular antenna at 2625 West Glen Flora Avenue.
Motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Eyes have it on the amended motion. Now, what we will do is, again, we'll take the motion to take all those items under the omnibus voting, except for, as I said before, under ordinances and resolutions, ordinance, item B. 11B.
I like the point of information.
Yes, Alderman.
Our Public Safety Committee motion, well, and seconded by the amount of donation being determined by the Finance Committee to contribute to Lake County Cranston, what is that? What, how much do we vote on?
We don't know yet. That's why we, we had a recommendation to talk to the Finance Committee to see what would be appropriate. Historically, we've done $5,000, but we wanted to see what our budget would allow this year.
So, why would we make a motion if we don't know what it is?
We just felt it was appropriate to refer it to the Finance Committee.
This is what I don't like about this anonymous voting.
We could take, if you like, we could take it out.
Take it out. Please take it out. I want to know where I vote on. Point of information that just states that the amount of donation being determined by the Finance Committee. If we don't approve them, then we're just passing it off right now.
Why are we being followed?
Why, we're just providing information.
Yeah, why don't we do this, Alderman, why don't we remove item B out? It's not actually an action item at this point. It was referred from one committee to the next, which should not require coming through this process. That would just be strictly a referral between committees. So, Alderman Tempest, would that help you on that? Okay, thank you. If the Chairman, Chairman Larson, would you have any objection to that?
No, none whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. We will remove that, strike that from the agenda.
Strike item B?
Yes, on public safety. Yeah. Okay. So, again, motion to use the omnibus procedure, as I said, motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Conkin. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
I don't vote no, I don't like the omnibus voting.
It's got to be unanimous consent to be able to use omnibus.
And I don't vote no.
Okay. At that point, then we will go back and begin to go item by item. Under committee reports and motions, we have a Judiciary Committee, item A, Alderman Figueroa.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item on the agenda on the Judiciary Committee has to do with the zoning calendar 2285 for the petitioner SAC Wireless Clear Wire, and this location is located at 2625 West Glen Flora Avenue. The Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to approve the conditional, to add draft and ordinance approving the conditional use permit for cellular antenna at 2625 West Glen Flora Avenue.
Motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item, item B. Item, item B.
Next item on the agenda has to do with zoning calendar 2289 for the petitioner Art Lake. Art Lake spoke to the council earlier this evening, under audience time, and the, is to, the Judiciary Committee approved drafting an ordinance to approve the text amendment allowing off-track bedding facilities as a conditional use in the B1 Community Shopping District at Fountain Square, or not at Fountain Square, but the B2 Community Shopping District. The Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to have the Corporation Council, wait a minute, no, that, that was already presented as, as a text amendment, wasn't it? That's why I don't have that in front of me. So, it was already presented as a text amendment, so it would be approving the text amendment as presented.
Yes, Corporation. No.
It's already been drafted.
That's right, it's been drafted. So, we have a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham on mo, item B. Roll call, please.
I don't know.
Excuse me.
We, the way the current motion reads is that my office drafts an ordinance to approve a text amendment. I have not drafted that ordinance, whether you have it in your packets, if you have, I'd like to see it, so.
Okay, well, that was last week, so.
Point of order.
Alderman Tempest.
The minutes that we have here, it's official, if you vote, it says to draft an ordinance, not to approve.
It was to draft.
Therefore, are we?
You're telling me to draft it then.
Okay, let me re, let me rephrase my, my motion. The Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to have Corporation Council draft an ordinance, changing the text amendment allowing off-track bedding facilities as a conditional use in the B2 Community Shopping District.
Yeah, great, thank you. I think we've got that straightened out. We have a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
It's drafted, it's just a draft.
Just a draft?
Voice vote.
Voice vote, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Sorry about the confusion, I'm not used to seeing an item on the agenda that's calling for someone to draft. That usually happens at the committee level and doesn't normally make it up to this level. Item C, Alderman Figueroa.
Okay. The item number C has to do with zoning calendar 2288. It is also for the petitioner Art Lake. So, once we approve drafting the ordinance, or drafting the ordinance to allow off-track bedding facilities, now we have to, an ordinance to approve allowing off-track bedding facilities. So, the Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to have the Corporation Council draft an ordinance approving, or allowing off-track bedding facilities as a conditional use in the B2 Community Shopping District.
Motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Public Safety, under Alderman Larson, item A.
Thank you. Engineering study. The Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to seek requests for proposals for any necessary improvements to the property at 1721 North Macquarie Road. This, in case the public doesn't know, is the Reserve Center that's made itself available for the city to do something with.
Alderman, would you mind stating that again and adding as amended?
To seek RFPs for any necessary improvements to the property at 1721 North Macquarie Road as amended.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item B, Alderman Larson.
Item B was the contribution of $5,000, which we've historically done to Lake County Crime Stoppers. Public Safety Committee recommended that this be transferred, or referred to the Finance Committee for action and a recommendation as to the appropriate amount in this year's budget.
And that will come through Finance for our next City Council meeting.
Place it in Finance Committee.
That'll be placed in Finance Committee, yes, thank you. Thank you, Alderman Larson. Economic Development and Public Relations Committee, Alderman Moisio.
Yes, we had one item. It is a business agreement. The Economic Development and Public Relations Committee recommends an ISO move that the City Council authorize the proper city officials to enter into a business development agreement with Family Piano Company as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Conkin. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you, and congratulations. You've been wonderful, been a wonderful business downtown, we look forward to working with you over the years to come. Thank you very much. We have no old business, no communications, oh, I'm sorry, we do have a communication, I take that all back.
At the last council meeting, I had indicated that I would be providing the council with some materials. One had to do with the, the local regulation of gun sales. This is an issue that arose out of the complaint that's been made to the council repeatedly about a gun that was purchased from a local gun store. It turns out that we do have ordinances that apply to gun dealers, but they only require that gun dealer to report to our police department when it sells or gives a gun, not when it buys a gun. And I'm going to be suggesting a revision of this ordinance, an amendment, that would also include that a report is made to our police department when a gun is bought with the serial number, et cetera, so that the police department at that point can check the number. I think this would have, if we'd had that language before, we wouldn't have had this problem to begin with. So, I'll be bringing it to the council for its, hopefully its approval, maybe by next meeting. Secondly, the local hiring ordinance has undergone some rethinking since we last talked. Two things occurred. One, I had a meeting with the council for North Chicago and the council for Waukegan Township, and the three of us put our heads together pursuant to our respective communities' direction, and we are in the process of trying to draft language that all three communities or all three entities could sort of unite behind, we think that would strengthen the teeth in the ordinance. We also had a chance to speak with Corporation Council, Corporation Council for Chicago this past Thursday, and I'll get into that later, but they also indicated that, you know, their own local hiring ordinance may not necessarily be applicable to us because of what North, what the city of Chicago can bring to the table to back up something like this. So, they also said they would help us, and they've given me a contact in the city government of Chicago that I'm going to be exploring, see if we can get some better language. What I did do for you, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, is I gave you a couple more examples of local hiring ordinances. One from, I think, Santa Clara County, and, or one from, Santa Clara, one from Santa Cruz County. So, we've got a city and a state ordinance, again, to look at as well as Chicago one, as we try to put this together. Corporation Council in Chicago agreed with me that we do have privileges, immunity issues we have to overcome, and we do have findings issues we must overcome. The case law seems to be very clear that we have to have legislative findings, that the lack of having local participation in public works projects has a definite economic impact on our community. Along those lines, the three of us lawyers from North Chicago, Waukegan Township, myself, have approached State Representative Washington, who is very interested in convening a legislative panel to do an investigation of this issue in our communities, and to perhaps make some findings that all of us can then use to address the subject. So, we're still, have a bit of a delay here, we want to do this right, I just wanted to let everybody know why it's taking a bit of time. The overlay ordinance as well, this is where we prevent, or the idea is to prevent the rental of property in various sections of the city pursuant to petition by those residents. That is, again, was discussed with Chicago Corporation Council, and they also had some concerns about it, as I did constitutionally, and we are going to be exploring that further with East Lansing, who is sort of the model community here, and we're not, I'm not yet ready to hand something to the City Council for action yet. The last thing is the, addressing the problem of the vacant, derelict homes that are popping up in our neighborhoods. I think every Alderman sitting up here has issues like this in their wards, is sort of a, one of the real downsides of the foreclosure, not only are families put out of their homes, but those homes then become nuisances for the neighborhoods. So, what I've given you is sort of an action plan, I've given you sort of the, from the town website, the way we used to use this ordinance on the private sector, and then I've indicated to you at the bottom how the city can use this same statute, and given you a copy of the statute, and I, what I propose is that we start this kind of a program here and now, once I'm given the go-ahead by this council, to begin to prioritize these properties, get them listed, get action taken, get them cleaned up, using this rather tough approach. So, for your consideration, I gave it to you this evening. That's it.
Thank you, Corporate Council, we appreciate that insight and information. Under New Business and Recommended Actions by Corporation Council, under New Business, item A, approve the payroll dated January 28, 2010, in the amount of $1,459,242.38. We have a motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
So approved. Item B, approve bill's date at February 1, 2010, in the amount of $648,143.38. Motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Motion accept a monthly report from the Clerk's Office for the month of December 2009 by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Needham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Under Ordnances and Resolutions, A, ordinance with amendment to allow the city to charge homeowners $7 for additional recycling bins for a additional, I'm sorry, excuse me, a additional recycling bin, not to replace the recycled bin as presented. Revised proposed ordinance to reflect residents that bring in broken bins can receive a free replacement. We have a motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item B, ordinance to approve the landmark calendar number L-4-09, Christ Episcopal Church, location at 410 West Grand Avenue. We have, I'll make the motion first, we have a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Do we have any comments or discussion?
Yes, we'd like to send that back to the Corporation Council to make the proper revisions from committee.
It was requested that this be held over.
Surely.
By Alderman Tempest, and it will be returned and then be made available at the earliest possible meeting that, once he's done with the work. Thank you. Item C, ordinance to approve establishing regulations governing the registration, maintenance, security, and monitoring of vacant properties by their owners.
Now. Yeah, well, that's a separate, that's a separate.
Separate item, okay. We have a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Your Honor?
Yes, Alderman Figueroa.
I think that this is a pretty important ordinance, and we have Mr. Hank Landra in the ordinance, in the, in the audience, who worked very hard, along with Ann Lynn and the, and the other departments in putting this thing together. If, indulges the Alderman, I think we'd like to have him make a presentation as to what this ordinance entails, if he can make a quick presentation for the, not only for the public that is here, but for the viewing public.
Please, Mr. Landra, please step up to the podium and, the insight.
You told me I was going to get away with having to talk tonight. Anyway, as the Alderman pointed out, we have been working on this particular ordinance now for eight, nine, 10 weeks, and as the Corporation Council pointed out, it's a problem that stretches across all of our wards. The idea that we have vacant properties that are not being taken care of by their owners or responsible parties. We drafted an ordinance that addresses a lot of different issues. First of all, we want to determine as closely as possible how many vacant properties do we have in the city at any given time. Obviously, this number fluctuates from time to time. We want to make sure that we know who the owners of these properties are at any given time. In addition to that, most importantly, we want to make sure that these responsible parties are in fact taking care of these properties, so that the city doesn't have to expend its own funds in terms of, are the monies directly, or police, or fire, or inspectors, to try to keep these properties in check. And obviously, one of the more lofty goals is to make sure that these properties are reoccupied and returned to the tax rolls. So, with that in mind, we've researched a lot of different properties across the country, including Chicago, and we've come up with an ordinance which we think is pretty comprehensive and will address these issues. It doesn't mean that we don't have a lot of work to do, it just means that we have a pretty comprehensive staff to go ahead and make sure that things get done. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that. Item D, ordinance authorizing the city of Waukegan to borrow funds from the Water Pollution Control Loan Program of the IEPA, referencing the Washington Street Wetlands Facility. We have a motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Do we require any explanation as to what we have before us? We have Mr. Ron Lalback here, the city engineer, do we have any questions on this item at all?
Mayor, for the public, you know, if you'd like to explain.
Ron, would you mind giving us maybe a two-minute overview on what this entails and where, where this area is, just so people know? Once you describe it, everybody's going to go, "Oh, I know exactly where that is, I've driven through the puddles before."
This is the area that is on Washington Street, it's east of Waukegan Tire, and we have proposed to put in a wetland facility that will also provide some stormwater benefits. And we did apply to the IEPA to obtain a 20-year zero-interest loan, and this is the ordinance that basically authorizes this action.
Thank you. We had a lot of partners come together on this, so I think it's a really good project.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we've had some people donate some property, and we're involved with the county, with the Army Corps of Engineers, with stormwater management, there's a lot of people working together with the city on this, so we want to thank Ron for his efforts. Thank you, Alderman Tempest.
That should also help over where, you know, where WK is, that always just a flood, just going to try and hose some water back in the detention.
It's not going to be the end-all, because it's just a very small piece of the pie that needs to happen to correct that situation.
Tell him to get a lake, you gotta open up that waterway, too.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
It's a start.
Thank you very much, it is a start. We have the motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
So approved, thank you very much. Now, we will do Alderman's time, and then the public, I want to let you know that following Alderman's time, we will be going into executive session. So in essence, for all intents and purposes, the meeting will conclude after the end of the Alderman's time, though we do have to come back in and vote to go out of regular session. So, Mr. Motley, if you could invite the Alderman to speak, based on your list.
Alderman Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Violet, on behalf of Waukegan Main Street, to give such a nice report on all the positive things that Waukegan Main Street Organization is doing to boost the activity in our wonderful retailer, retail partners downtown. So, shop in Waukegan, eat in Waukegan, and make it down to Genesee Street and County Street and surrounding streets to do so as much as you can. It's important to all of the retailers in Waukegan to honor their businesses, and I hope you do that as much as you can. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you. I know, we didn't mention it in our last meeting, but, you know, with the earthquake in Haiti, if, I know we have a Haitian community here as well, in Waukegan, so I know there's a lot of fundraising going on. So please, if you have an opportunity to give, please give, because they definitely desperately need this help. Thank you.
Thank you, and if I might add, too, that one of the city's corporate attorneys, Mr. John Jonah, has a family background in Haiti and is heading up a effort out of Waukegan to provide aid. So if you would like more information on how to contact them, contact the city, and we will provide that and steer you in the right direction. This is a huge, huge event down there that has killed at least 150,000 people, if not more, and if we don't reach out and do something to help them in their homeland, we will be having to accept them as refugees in ours. And we must act on it. So thank you very much, Alderman Rivera, we appreciate that.
Alderman Cunningham.
As we approach tomorrow, everyone knows that voting starts at 6, ends at 7. It has often been said, if you do not vote, then you have no reason to complain. So I'm asking everybody, please get out and vote your conscience. Thank you.
Alderman Conkin.
Yes, thank you. Just like to make an announcement, that the week of February 8th through 13th is Department of Veterans Affairs. By the way, thank you, Mayor, for making me the military liaison for this council. It's celebrating the National Salute to Hospitalized Veterans. These are men that gave a little bit more than most of us did when the time, when they were called upon, so it's just something I want everybody to keep in mind. They're having, I'm invited to visit the VA Medical Center. I will try to do that next week. And before this council meets again, it'll be Valentine's Day, so make sure you're with somebody you love that day, give them a hug, and enjoy the day. Thank you.
Him or her. Him or her.
All for a lanty for a Marine.
Alderman Moisio.
Pass.
Alderman Figueroa, thank you. February 2010, Boy Scouts of America, celebrating 100 years of having been established here in the United States two years ago. They celebrated 100 years of the world in England, having been created. Boy Scouts was originally established as a paramilitary organization, but I know that when I, as a child, it helped me out with just envisioning and having a different outlook on life, having grown up on the south side of Waukegan. It, but I'm, what I'm saying is that there's a lot of programs for youth out there. Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts was two excellent programs, and it needs volunteers. Needs volunteers in the sense that we need organizations step up to the plate and just volunteer the facilities and volunteer the people, and organize neighborhood Cub Packs and scouting troops. If you have any question, we're having a membership drive in the Northeast Illinois Council. You can see me after the meeting if you're interested. That's it, Your Honor. Thank you. Alderman Newsom.
Pass.
Alderman Tempest, yes, I have a little report to make to the public. Some of you are quite well aware of the red light cameras that I, so, that I voted against. The House Rules Committee released two of Representative Jack Frank's bills to the Vehicle and Safety Committee. These bills are scheduled to be heard in committee on Thursday, February 4, in Springfield. House Bill 4686 would reduce the violation fine from $100, which if you don't quite stop[1593.76]